All right, welcome. You guys are in luck. We got our clock fixed in the back, so now I know what time it is. And I'll keep you, get you out of here on time. So I want to welcome all of you on this. Man, we're into summer now. I love this. The heat is coming, it's pool time. You know where I was from? Yeah, I know if you don't like it, but you know where I used to live? The ice just went off the lakes last week. So they just got the ice off the lakes in time for opening fishing season this last weekend. So it's a little bit different part of the world. So welcome to, we're taking a little hiatus, a little break, if you will. I shouldn't even say hiatus, it's a detour. And we're going to look at different prophetic interpretations. You remember, I think, the first meeting we had? And I know that's a challenge because that's already been going on nine months ago, that we talked a little bit about the different schools of interpretation. Now that we're really through the bulk of the book, you've seen Revelation, and you've also seen all of Daniel. We're going to just take this little detour, because I know some of you've talked to me about talking with your friends that are from other denominations, and they come up with totally different understandings of what's going to go on. And this is, this happens quite a bit with Adventists all around America. When we started here, I remember I was talking to, yeah, some guy I was working with. I was, I had an evangelistic campaign in New Jersey for field school, just outside of Philadelphia for the summer when I was in seminary. And I went out to you with this gentleman, he was actually a professor at a seminary there. And so he said, "Are you post or mid or pre-trib?" Like, I had to think about it. I'm not sure. I'm a Seventh-day Adventist. Let's see, let me, what am I? So hopefully tonight you'll be able to answer that question. We'll look at it. And you'll be able to see where other denominations, where the movements came from. And hopefully that will help you as you have conversations about what you're learning here. And yeah, I think it should be interesting. And I'll talk a little bit more about how little I know about this here in a few minutes. So let's start off with a word of prayer, and then we'll get started. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this evening. We thank you for this time that we've had, the past nine months, and the joy it's been to study your Word, and study of how you love us, and how you love humanity, and take care of us. So Lord, we pray your Holy Spirit will be here with us. May you bless us and guide us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. So tonight, I really do think I will actually leave time for questions, because you may have some questions. I might even have some questions from my interpretation, from my presentation. So, you remember, so we'll start off with a worksheet, just to get it clear. What are the four main methods of prophetic interpretation? The first one I put up there is historical. That's what we've been looking at. We've been looking at the history of God's people all the way from five to 600 years before Jesus came, all the way up until the present time. And then we're looking a little bit into the future. But really, when you think about it, we don't think it's that long, probably. You know, 1,000 years is like one day to God. But I mean, 2,500 years of history, we've seen these empires come and go, from Babylon to Persia to Greece to Rome, and then the Ten Toes, and then all of the development of Europe and the Middle Ages. So that's the historical method. So we'll look, we've already looked at that. We won't particularly look at it tonight. We'll just review it. I've got one chart on it. We'll look at that. Then you have preterist. So if you're a person that wants, you know, this is a word we probably don't use that much. If you want to, well, what is that? Remember the prefix, "pre." It's before. The preterist point of prophetic interpretation is that the books of Daniel and Revelation happened a long time ago. Pre. It's pre the Christian era. It's either, and we'll look at that, we'll look at that tonight, where most preterists land. It used to be a bit more popular, especially what would be considered maybe, I think, the liberal side of Christianity. I don't know. It's not quite as popular now, and we'll look at why. Because we'll look at futurists as well tonight. The futurist, I think that should be pretty easy to remember. It's all in the future. Nothing, almost nothing in books of Daniel and Revelation have happened yet, but there's going to be this burst of prophetic activity over this short period of time. And the whole book of Daniel and Revelation will come alive and everything will happen. Then you have idealists. We're really not going to look at it, because there's really nothing to look at with idealists. Idealists say, you know, "We're not going to look at history. We're not going to worry about the future. We're not going to worry about the past." All of Revelation is just this kind of mythological tale of good versus evil. And when I read it, I soak it in, and I take the ideals of what it's talking about, good versus evil, and I just apply it in my everyday life. So, you know, obviously, we would probably all say, "We're somewhat idealist." You know, you look at, for instance, the seven churches in Revelation 2 and 3. Every church, you can learn something from, right? It's not, "Well, we just live in Laodicea and I don't have to worry about Philadelphia or Ephesus." No, I mean, we take the ideals, the values, the, you know, instruction that God gave in those other churches, and we apply it to our lives. So, but an idealist would say, "No, we're going to forget about historical. We're going to forget about preterism. We're going to forget about futurism. We're just going to look at it as this cosmic battle between good and evil, and how we can apply it in our lives." So you might wonder why I selected that picture up there, of five crisp $100 bills. You know, we're going on a trip here on Sunday to Ukraine, and we have to take this crisp money, because they don't exchange dollar bills with, you know, the rips, or if they're even wrinkled a little bit, they want the crisps off. And they look at it, and they hold it, and then they give you your money, exchanging it. I put that up there because I don't really know that much about preterism and futurism, because I really don't study them that much. I've studied them enough to kind of understand where they came from, the overall teaching of it. But if some of you ask me tonight, "Well, I heard this, and this denomination says that," I'll say, "Yeah, probably. I don't know." Because I don't go through. Now, I forgot to bring Leroy Froome's volumes. He has four volumes, probably this thick. And he goes through prophetic interpretation from the time of Christ all the way to the present day, and what every main prophetic interpreter thinks about it and the development of it. It's incredibly detailed. It's the seminal work for any seminary in America. It was done by a Seventh-day Adventist on developing prophetic interpretation. Where did it come from? But you know, if you work in a, this is what I understand, and I may be wrong. But I've heard, if you work at a bank and you're supposed to figure out which one is a counterfeit, you know what they do? They don't teach you about all the different counterfeits. You don't go through and learn everything the counterfeiter does. You learn what the real one looks like and memorize that. Then if it doesn't look like the real one, then you know, this is a counterfeit. I think that's a good analogy to prophetic interpretation. You can spend a lot of time trying to figure out what every denomination, what every movement teaches. I would recommend you be, and that's why we're going through this. You know, some of you think we're maybe moving too fast, but really, we're taking a whole year to really get a grounded view of what our church believes. And I'm proud of what our church teaches in this regard. We're one of the few that has held to the historical position of interpreting prophecy. And I'll tell you why I think that's important. You go back to Martin Luther. Let's go back to that very stubborn, very intriguing German from the 16th century. And in 1517, he posted his 95 thesis. He was a loyal son of the Catholic Church, loved the Catholic Church, loved God, and was doing everything in his might to bring himself into right relationship with God. He began to preach and teach contrary to what the church taught at the time. And he thought probably the church would come around and accept things. And he really wanted to reform. He did not want to break away from the church. He really loved the church, which should be a good example for the Christian reformer. We don't want to cause problems. We don't want to break away. We don't want to... Martin Luther didn't. He wanted people to fall in love with Jesus like he had through Scripture. But when the church started to fight against him, and after the Diet of Worms, he barely escaped with his life, had to hide out in a castle in Germany for a few years, was able to translate the Bible into German. And the German princes rallied around him, and the Reformation really, yeah, it was kind of starting before him. There was Jan Hus, and there were other reformers, you know, the Waldensees and the Lawards, and they'd come, and we looked at that. But Martin Luther really was the first one who started to look and promote that the prophecies of Daniel and Revelation were fulfilled in the history of the church, even during his time. That was a break. He held to the historicist's position. Leroy Froome, if you're interested, I'll take you to my office. I've got those three volumes. You can order them online. They're not cheap. You'll spend a couple hundred dollars to get the four volumes. But you can track how the church was looking at prophecy. And for these hundreds of years surrounding Martin Luther and the Reformation, the reformers always used the historical method to interpret prophecy. They were always looking at the big picture. And I've said this before, if we're going to interpret prophecy, don't read a newspaper or watch a TV show to interpret prophecy. Look at a history book. And that's basically what the reformers were doing. However, you know the conclusion he came to. Because the Pope was fighting against him, he came to the conclusion that the Pope was the Antichrist at that time, the papacy, the system, not just the Pope himself, but the system was so corrupt that it was beyond hope. He was trying to reform it, and that it actually fulfilled the prophecies that we looked at of Daniel chapter 7, Daniel chapter 11, Revelation 13. And he started to look at those timeframes. He wasn't that far off from where we've ended up as a church, where the Seventh-day Adventists ended up as a church. However, the Catholic Church did reform some. And they did, before, they had, you remember from the 12th century on, and I've talked about that quite a bit, they had voted that torture would be a way to evangelize. They started to get away from that, and they decided because Europe was becoming more educated, there was a printing press there, that now they had to combat some of these theories with actual, what we should combat theories with, other theories. Instead of going out and killing people, let's discuss and come up with other solutions. So that's exactly what happened, and this is what's called the Counter-Reformation. This is one of the questions on your worksheet, you can, just so you remember. These are two very famous Jesuit priests. It was during this time that the Jesuits were formed. And by the way, you know, some in our church, the conspiracy theories about the Jesuits, and the Jesuits are out to, you know, get us all. Now, the Jesuits were actually, in a sense, they could have been a very good development for the Church of the Middle Ages, because they actually were trying to educate and encounter these theories with other theories. So they became very educated priests, and they were loyal sons of the Church and trying to defend the Church's position. So it actually was, in a sense, a development from just putting people on a rack. But let's at least talk. So Francisco Rivera in 1585, so this is about, what, 40-some years after Martin Luther had passed away, he wrote a commentary in Revelation, and he developed the concept of futurism. So you can imagine what is going on. You know, the papacy and other, you know, loyal Christians of that time were like, "Man, these Lutherans, they're kind of pests." You know, they're saying, "What, we're the Antichrist? Come on now." So what is another interpretation we could give to that? So he said, "Wait a minute. No, this is going to be a future time." And you can look it up of everything he said. It's not exactly what most Christians believe now, and we'll look at that here in a few minutes. But he said, "No, these aren't applying to us. These are applying to a time in the future." Luis de Alcazar, also a Jesuit priest. So yeah, sometimes, you know, it makes it seem like the Jesuits are all united. No, these are both Jesuits. They both came up with different understandings of Scripture. He wrote "The Investigation of the Hidden Sense of the Apocalypse." Apocalypse, sorry. And he developed the idea of preterism. "No, these are not in the future. This is not going to happen at some date, you know, down the road before Jesus comes back. This all happened during the time of Antiochus Epiphanes." And we'll look at that here in a little bit. So you have coming out of the Counter-Reformation. This is a very, you can write it down on your worksheet so you remember it. Why did prophecy get away from the historical position? Well, the Church didn't really appreciate being called what they were being called through the prophetic understanding of the historical understanding of prophecy. So the Church itself came up with these ideas, which, you know, every prophet of old is always accepted more than the prophets of today. You remember the Jews at Jesus' time, they always said, "Well, we like Moses, but we don't like you." Why? Well, Moses lived, you know, 1,200 years ago. You know, you can kind of mess with his writings, but there Jesus was standing right before him, saying, "No, but you guys need to change." That's a little bit different. It's not just theoretical. You know, I've heard the preacher of like, "Well, that was a pretty good sermon preacher, but when you start talking about those sins, you started meddling a little bit." You know, because if you start talking about things that we're doing now, it's easier to talk about what, you know... And that should also be a lesson for us in prophetic interpretation, that we need to be careful. We can commit the exact same mistakes that the Church of the Middle Ages committed. And they didn't particularly like what the Lutherans were saying. So let's just go back and look at it, because if you take anything away from these last nine months, I hope you take away the 1,260-day prophecy. There is no prophecy in Scripture which is repeated seven times. And now that we've been through them all, I put them all up on the screen, and I put them all how they're referred to, all in the same place, so you can see them all. So you remember, Daniel 7:25, when we were talking about the power that would come and change God's law, said he would reign for a time, times half a time. Daniel 12 verse 7 says it the exact same way, "A time, times, and half a time." That is, a year, two years, and half a year, three and a half years. Revelation 12:14, when we were looking at the great controversy, and when we were looking at the woman and this church that was going to be keeping God's commandments. Again, the power that was going to oppress it was there for a time, times, and half a time. Revelation 11 and 13 both call that time period 42 months. Revelation 11 and Revelation 12 refer to it as a 1,260-day period. And you remember, so I'm putting this all together. You can go back, look at your worksheets, watch the videos, whatever you need to do. But everywhere the historicist, historicist looks at it, says, "Wait a minute. This is a time period God wanted to let the world know. My church will take my name, but as it says in Revelation 11, it would be given to the Gentiles." That is, it would not act like a church. It would get involved in politics. It would start to rule over kings, where Jesus said, "My kingdom is not of this world. My kingdom is of another world." So this is a time period, and Protestant reformers didn't really start figuring this out until what happened? Until Napoleon had basically gotten rid of the medieval church, which France getting rid of the Catholic Church is just unthinkable. So all of a sudden Protestants are like, "What just happened?" And they start to look in their Bibles, and that's when, "Wait a minute. Oh, it talks about going into captivity." And you remember all the things we talked about, that it would persecute God's people. It would change God's law. It would set itself up against God, speak blasphemous things against Him. And this is when the Protestant reformers really came to understand, "Wait a minute. This is a time period when God prophesied that this would be a time of apostasy of Christianity." So, and you remember Daniel 9 and 8. So this is just a review of what we have covered already. Daniel 9 is really one of the key prophecies of Scripture, because we know it was fulfilled so clearly. It was fulfilled so clearly in Jesus when He died on the cross in 31 AD. We can, we know the year. If you go to the, when the Jews were sent back to rebuild Jerusalem, and you count out those years, 457 B.C. to 34 AD, it's exactly 490 years. And that last week, right in the middle, is when Jesus died. We know that from history. So we see that that has been fulfilled. I want you to, I want you to think about that, because in that prophecy, that prophecy shows that when Jesus was in the Garden of Eden, He couldn't even put it off another year. He had promised in that week, he said, remember, he said, "Father, if you can let this cup, you know, be passed beyond me, not from, so I don't have to drink it. Let it happen, but not my will, but yours be done." This was fulfillment of the prophecy. We saw it. We know it happened. And then Daniel 8, remember the word that we talked about, for those of you who weren't with us? It says that Daniel 8, in that same word for the vision that's used in Daniel 9, it said, "We'll be amputated from the other part of the vision." I'm sorry, in Daniel 9, that it would be amputated from the other part. Well, which vision? The 2,300-day vision. So we know that the first part was fulfilled exactly in Daniel chapter 9. So that's why the early Adventists believed 457 B.C. to 1844 was very trustworthy. Why? Because Jesus did come. Jesus did die on the cross. Jesus came on time. Says, "When the time was in the fullness of time, Jesus came to the world. God was faithful to His promise. He promised, and He sent Jesus." So that's our understanding of the main, those are the main prophecies, not every one. Let's look at this. Yeah, you won't be able to write all this down. Don't worry. This is, this is, when I found this, I thought, "Man, I don't know if everybody will actually even see this on the screen." But this is everything, and you know, I talked about last week and timelines. Well, in this time period that we're living in, it's, remember Revelation 10 said, "There shall be no more delay. There's no more time prophecy." But here we have the decree to rebuild Jerusalem. So you have the 70 weeks that go up to 34 AD. Jesus dies in that last week. But then that's part of the greater overarching 2,300-year prophecy. Now, up here is a 2,520 prophecy. Don't worry about that one. The early Adventists got distracted with that. It is on our early prophetic charts. They ended up taking it off. And there are some Adventists to this day that think the Adventist Church is apostatized because we're not using that 2,520-year prophecy anymore. I had to deal with some of them in my former district. But the early, that's actually from Leviticus. Ask me, if you want information on it, I'll give it to you. It's where God promised. And if you don't repent, He told the Israelites, "Then I'll do seven years of plague. If you don't do that, then seven years." They add up all the seven years time periods prophetically, and they came up to 2,520, and they said that it was fulfilled in Israel from 677, and that took you up to 1844 as well. They thought that was a good prophecy. They studied it more. And James White came up with five reasons why that was, he called it just the preaching of the wind. It made no sense, so they took it off. But somebody put this on this chart. So then you have all the different, remember, the seals, the white horse, the Church of Ephesus, we said, from this time period when the church was fairly pure, it was conquering. And then you have another 100 years, where you have the Smyrna, and the second seal of the seals of Revelation 6, the red horse. And then you have Pergamos over here, the first trumpet begins. The conversion of Constantine, we talked about that some, when the church became very politicized, and all of a sudden Christianity went from underground religion to being the government religion. And then you have all these different Arians, and when Clovis was baptized, and the 1,290-year prophecy that goes up here, the 1,260 that starts here, that we looked at, 538 to 1799. Martin Luther, the fifth trumpet, the attack of the Ottoman Empire, Revelation 9. You remember, we went through that, the fifth and sixth trumpet. And on August 11, 1840, when the Ottoman Empire had to, on that exact day, had to figure out from the powers of Europe what they had decided. And then you have what the Bible considers the end of times, because the time periods are ending. The stars fall. There was a sun and moon smitten. There was a Lisbon earthquake leading up to 1844. And then we have over here, the sealing of God's people, the preaching of the Three Angels' messages, Laodicea, the sixth seal, which goes all the way up to the Second Coming, Church of Philadelphia up here. And then last week, we studied the Seven Plagues, the Seventh Trumpet, the Second Coming of Jesus. And in a couple weeks, we'll study the 1,000-year reign. And then at the end, remember, we'll have dessert, and we'll look at the last two chapters and being in the Kingdom of Heaven. So again, look at the time period. And the reason I'm showing that to you is not so you have to memorize all this, and there won't be a test, and, but you look at the intricacy of the time periods, and at each time period, God is doing something. He's giving counsel to the church. He's working with the church. He's telling what's going to happen. He cares. And there's 2,600 years of history where God says, "You know what? I'm going to walk with you through all this." Personally, I think that's the best picture of God. I don't think God just falls asleep. There are many deists in the world that say, "God, there is a Creator God. He just set the world spinning, and like a watchmaker, He sends the watch off, and He goes off and does His own thing." That's not the picture Jesus painted. He said, "If a bird falls, the Father notices it." How much more when kingdoms rise and fall, and when God's church is persecuted, and people are killed, and people are going through suffering, and the churches... Would we actually think that God would be like, "Oh, yeah, whatever?" So to me, again, why have I presented the whole historical method of interpreting Scripture? And by the way, we can always, through our Adventist history, we've always had lively debates about fulfillment of it. It's not that, you know, the powers of being silver spring tell us what to believe. No, I mean, our Church has hammered some of this stuff out. They really have had whole prophetic conferences back in the late 1800s. We've kind of gotten away from that, where they actually had different speakers come and give their points of view, and they'd have all the church workers and lay members trying to figure this out, and what is God up to right now? So I think that makes sense to me. Just on a base level, as a Christian who loves Jesus, who believes that Jesus knows how many hairs are on my head, why would He be a deist to just let us go? But anyway, I'm starting to preach. So let's get on to preterism. Preterism, and I put it on your worksheet. You'll want to remember this. If you ever talk to a preterist, like I said, it's harder to find them. They say that Antiochus Epiphanes, and we talked about this, I believe, in Daniel chapter 11. Remember, he was a salucid ruler. He was trying to re... His father was Antiochus III, Antiochus the Great. And the Salucid Empire had been very great. It had come into financial problems, though. And Antiochus Epiphanes was trying to raise money and conquer the same territories that his father had. And you remember, he went to Egypt, and the Romans said, and the Roman power was getting stronger and stronger there in the Middle East. And the Roman legate showed up and drew a circle in the sand around him, and said, "Before you leave this circle, tell me if you're going to surrender or not." Just humiliated him. So on his way back from Egypt, back home to the capital there of the Salucid Empire, he had to go through Jerusalem. When he got to Jerusalem, what did he do? You remember, I think we talked about this. He took Jerusalem under his power for about three years, because he was upset. He forbade them for having different sacrifices. He actually was sacrificing pigs at the altar there in Jerusalem. Terrible. For the Jews at the time, it was a terrible time. And that's where the Maccabees rose up, and they delivered the Jews, and that's where we get Hanukkah from, is that they delivered them from the evil Salucid Empire. So some people tried to interpret, and I'll have a slide here in a minute. They tried to interpret Daniel and Revelation through those eyes, that this was God's people in Jerusalem. They were attacked for a little over three years. I believe it was about three years, 10 days, if I'm not mistaken. And that, therefore, the prophecies were fulfilled during that time. Others look at the destruction of Jerusalem. That Jerusalem was still God's people. The Jews were still God's people. And then when the Jews were, remember, Titus came in, and they just razed the whole city. They said they didn't want anybody to ever know that Jerusalem even existed. It was a horrific, horrific event, and that's a drawing of it, of the Roman legions coming in and destroying Jerusalem. And the temple was burned to the ground, even though they thought they could save the temple, but they were not able to. So here it is. I want you to read all this, memorize it, and we'll have a test next week. No, just kidding. I can't even read it. So, but what you can see on there, this is an example, and I, you notice I like maps and charts. I like those more than just telling you things, because I think charts help. I like those more than just telling you things, because I think charts help. Do you see some of the time periods on there that we've talked about? This is, so here we have 70 A.D., here in the middle, the, the temple in Jerusalem. And on each side, you have three and a half and three and a half. Hmm. Where do they get that from? Revelation 11:2, Revelation 13:5, Revelation 11:11. Have we covered those in this? Yeah. What time periods are those? Those are the 42 months, the 1,260 days, and the, here you have time times half a time. And they come up with the same calculations that we do, only for the preterist point of view. To say, on either side, so what they do is they take those two times, because it's in there seven times. So they apply some of them to the front end before 70 A.D., and then they apply some at the, at the back end, and they come up with all these texts. Like I said, we're not gonna go through those tonight, otherwise we'd be here forever. Or till very late at night. But you see in general where they're getting this from, right? The same time periods that we look at and say, "Those are all one time period," and apply it to a long period of time, they take it and apply it to a seven-year period, a three and a half, three and a half, add it up to a seven-year period of time, surrounding 70 A.D. and the destruction of Jerusalem. And you can go back and look at those texts and see, well, where, maybe could they, could they get that? There would be a, a power that would speak boastfully, that would change the law. Is this the Romans? Are they coming into Jerusalem? Are they changing the law of God? They're, they're putting themselves up as God in the temple. You can kind of see where they maybe could make the argument from some of those texts from Daniel seven, Revelation 11, that this could be. However, that whole period of time is shrunk down into seven literal years, all right around the destruction of Jerusalem, and then the rest of the book of Revelation. And Daniel is kind of left, just to your understanding. Here's a, yeah, I like they put a pig up here. So this is another chart off of the internet. This is somebody that believes that, and I believe, I don't know if it's Jewish, if it's a Christian. I think it's a Christian explaining what the Jews believe. But guess where they think? Daniel eight, 11 through 14, the 2,300-day prophecy. But remember, it doesn't say day there, it says what? 2,300 evenings and mornings. So what do they do? Well, evening and morning. That means 2,300, you'd cut it in half to make one day, because there's an evening and then a morning. There's two every day, so you cut that in half, you get 1,150 days here, right? And the sacrifices stop for 1,150 days. Oh, guess what? Antiochus IV was in Jerusalem for about 1,150 days. It's not exact, and that's one of the, one of the arguments against this prophecy, is that it wasn't an exact fulfillment as far as dates go. But you could see where setting yourself up in the temple, no sacrifices, that some people view Daniel eight, which we view as a 2,300-year prophecy. They view that as about a three and a half-year prophecy of the temple being overtaken by Antiochus Epiphanes back 167, eight, or B.C. That's, again, the Maccabees delivered them, and so that, that would be some of the preterist understanding of when these prophecies were fulfilled. So, again, those are not the reigning evangelical. Most of you, if you're gonna talk to anybody about prophecy, will talk to somebody that follows more John Nelson Darby. Who is John Nelson Darby? Other than a somewhat menacing-looking individual in this picture, he was a pastor for the brethren in England from, in the, in the mid-1800s. He is what, who is considered, again, a question on your worksheet, the modern founder of dispensationalism and futurism. Now, why is he a, a figure that we should talk about? Well, we'll see here in a minute. He began to get away, in my opinion, from the Reformation. Martin Luther's big argument with the church is, "How does a man become righteous? Does he repent and then become righteous? Or is Christ righteousness imputed to that person, and he accepts it?" And the church was very, they had a slippery position on that. If you read some of the arguments during Luther's time between the church and Luther, it, it's somewhat nuanced. We need to be careful to make it, "Oh, it seems so black and white." But Charles Hadenspurgeon, anybody ever heard of him? One of the most famous preachers of the 19th century, was also, is a contemporary of his. And he also opposed John Nelson Darby and said, "You're getting away from the Protestant Reformation, and you're, you don't really understand the imputed righteousness of Christ." That when we accept Christ, His righteousness becomes ours before even we repent. Yes, "So enter it, we repent," but it's, anyway, that's, we're gonna get into the prophetic understanding of it. And he came up with these dispensations of where there are the innocence of Eden, then you have the conscience from Eden to the flood, and then you have human government where God comes down and gives a law. Then you have the patriarchs, Adam, Abraham to Moses, God reaching mankind through an intermediary. Then you have the law, Moses to Pentecost. But then after the Pentecost, you have grace. And again, he got away from the law of God, because now we are under grace, and this is the dispensation of grace. And so he would answer the old, the charges against the Old Testament, said, "Well, that was a different dispensation. God works in a different way for that dispensation." And by the way, when you read Ellen White, who is also a contemporary of Darby, she actually has a statement, and it all makes sense now as I was studying this. She says, "When you really study the Bible, you see that God has treated humanity, for the most part, the same from the very beginning. It's always been through grace. There's no age of grace and then an age of law." Yes, he had to give a law at some point, and he had patriarchs, and they did have a theocracy, and then after Jesus, they didn't. But God has always had an age of grace. And then he goes on to the millennium. So I'll try to give you time to write those down if you want them. Maybe not the most important, but what you see is, what he is trying to show is that God begins, God relates to humanity in different ways. How he reached this point, no one's really sure. And in fact, in studying for today, some think it was some girl who was very sick, who had a vision that she was taken up to heaven right before, and she called it the tribulation. So when he talks about the dispensations of the Bible, he comes up here and he says, "You know what?" So he has all this other, you know, that there was a age of law, and then at the, at the cross, then there's this age of grace, and there's an age of grace up until this rapture, when we are raptured up to heaven, and then after that, there is a tribulation, where it goes, reverts back to the dispensation of law somehow. And then Jesus Christ returns after the seven-year probation. And then after that, there's a kingdom of 1,000 years, and then we enter through the great white throne of Revelation into eternity. This began literally 200 years ago. Up to that point, no one was preaching this. So none of the reformers, not Huss, not Luther, not Zwingli, not John Calvin, not the Wesley brothers, not the, you know, all the people that we look to as having built our faith, they didn't preach this, but John Darby Nelson decided to. So, again, some people argued it at the time. He died. And then in 1909, just as the Pentecostal movement was starting here in America, on the Azusa Street revival in Los Angeles, and from there, Pentecostalism has become a movement that includes about 600 million people in the world. It's not a small movement. But right at that time, the Pentecostalism was developing, the Schofield Reference Bible came out. And it was the first reference Bible to use dispensationalism in the annotations, and it accepted hook, line, and sinker everything that Darby taught about the trib, the, the rapture and the trib, seven-year tribulation. Guess who started to quote this Bible? Hal Lindsey, you've heard of him, the great, late Planet Earth. Tim LaHaye, Left Behind, all those movies that came out that were very popular. So if you go to many, and probably the largest denomination here in the southern part of the United States especially, has accepted basically every, most everything of what the Schofield Reference Bible said. So, this is interesting, because where, where did they come up with this? You know, I went on today, and I found, I think it's a Methodist, it was not a Seventh-day Adventist work, where they said, "There is," they, some guy studied this, and he said, "You know, where in the Bible was this? Where were our Protestant reformers? How come they didn't believe in this?" And he went through 50 different leading scholars that teach this, this rapture and trib, seven-year tribulation and the second coming of Jesus. There's not one Bible text that is used to completely support this view. And they don't really know. It's just the weirdest thing. It's like, "Where did this come from?" And the guy that was studying this, it was a 100-page paper, 100 pages. And he goes through and documents everything, and he's like, "We can't find it." There, there's no, well, they've tried to come up with some, something, and, and this is the gap theory, it's called. And guess which prophecy this is from? The 70-week prophecy of Daniel chapter nine, which we just looked at, which is really the most precious prophecy we have in scripture, because it prophesied the exact year Jesus would come and die for us. And we know that was fulfilled. But what do they say? They said, "Well, there's a seven-week period, then a 62," you remember how it goes? Seven, there's a seven-week period where the city will be rebuilt in trouble, times of trouble. Then there's a 62-week period, and then in that last week, a covenant will be confirmed in the middle of the week, meaning that Jesus would die. I mean, if you look at it, and remember, we went through, I believe, was, Bob, did you go through that one? Chapter nine? Yeah, I think you went through it, and showed how all those texts so beautifully point to different time periods of, of how God was looking at, at the atonement of Jesus Christ. Well, what do they say? They say that last week, there is, there is a break in, after the 69 weeks, and that last week is, commences after the rapture. So look at this chart. This is not, can you see it here? Actually, I think I probably put up the law, the wrong one. So here are the differences of Christian millennial teachings. So there's a post-trib, right? Premillennialism. Well, what does that mean? We'll get to the millennium in Revelation 20. But this is where there's a cross, and then there's tribulation, there's a, a tribulation at the very end, and Jesus comes back at the end of the tribulation, hence the term post-tribulation. Premillennialism, then the millennium starts. Then there's a, a last judgment. So we would be considered post-millennialists, and we'll get, we'll get to that as we get to the millennium. But you should see that Daniel 12 said, "There will be a time that has never been, is, is a time of trouble such as never has come upon the world." Then there's the pre-trib, that there's a, a rapture here, a secret coming. Then there's a seven-year tribulation, then there's a second coming with the church. They take first Thessalonians and say that Jesus will come with the saints and rescue them. So they've gone up in rapture, then he brings them back, and they picks up everybody else after the seven-year tribulation. And then there's a millennium here, and then the last judgment. Then there's post-millennialism, post-millennialism. Many of these people believe that Jesus has a thousand-year period of peace, and then there's a second coming and last judgment. This was, yeah, in early 1900s, many Christians were teaching this. And they thought we were on this age of peace, the world would be Christianized, and guess what happened? World War I and World War II, and many Christians' hopes were dashed, that the millennium didn't work out so well. And then amillennialism, the symbolic millennium. We'll get to the millennium, but just so you can see it. But here, so then, if you break down, there are pre-tribulation raptures, mid-tribulation raptures, and post-tribulation, post-tribulation raptures. So some say at the beginning of the seven-year tribulation, there'll be a rapture of the church, they go up with Jesus, then they come back at the second coming. Others say there's a seven-year tribulation, in the middle of that tribulation, God is like, "Okay, I'll take the church up." So then there's a rapture of the church, and then they come back at the second coming. And then there's some that say, "No, there's a post-tribulation rapture, seven-year tribulation, and then you go up, and, I mean, they're just a rapture and second coming, and then a thousand-year reign of Christ." They all have that last judgment in eternity. So again, where does this come from? It all started with Darby. It was popularized in the Schofield Bible. And now, that's why we're not gonna go into it a whole lot, because then there are branches off of branches off of branches, when you look at all the, and, and they have these post-trib, pre-trib, mid-trib raptures. But look at this. This is the one I wanted to show you. So here's somebody that believes in the pre-trib rapture. Do you see, here's the cross? Here they have this break. Do you see that? That's the gap theory. That's the, Daniel chapter nine has 69 weeks, and then that last week is fulfilled after the church age. Almost like this dispensation of the church. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but it says, "We're almost there." So Revelation 4:1, they interpret Revelation 4:1, that we're almost at this age. Which, I read those texts, all these texts, and I don't see it, what they're seeing, but this is what they teach. And then guess what? Then you have this start of the tribulation, because here's the middle of the tribulation, here's the full seven years, and here you have what period of time? 1,260 days. Where did they get that? Revelation 11, which we also looked at in Revelation 11. Then you have the mid-trib. The Antichrist sits in the temple, the image of the beast is set up. So they go over here to Daniel nine, which we interpret that as the Romans killing Christ and, and tearing down the temple. And wrote Daniel 11:31, Daniel chapter 12, and then they use all these to show that there will be this huge, and this is where they get that there's going to be a huge battle at the actual temple of Jerusalem. And this battle of Armageddon. And then there's another three and a half-year period of time from not Revelation 11, but Revelation 12:6, again, another 1,260-day or 42-month period. There's this huge battle of Armageddon. All the Jews will convert. I was trying to find where that came from. I still haven't completely figured out where they get that, all the Jews converting. Well, except from Revelation 11, or Romans 11, where it says, "All Israel will be saved." So they believe that, and they, somehow they throw it into this tribulation, that the tribulation comes, the Jews all convert. And then there, the Antichrist comes and fights against them, there's this huge battle in the Middle East, and more tribulation. And then there's the second coming, and then after that, the millennium. I wish I could explain it better, because I, I really don't understand it myself. So there you go. I mean, that's the, the chart. But why is this, I want us to think about this. Why can this be considered a dangerous theory? When is the day of salvation according to the Bible? Yeah, today. Today is the day of salvation. And remember, last week, we talked about even how in our denomination, sometimes we wanna, "Well, what time are we in exactly, so that the, you know, right before the time of probation, I can, you know, wrap things up and really repent, and I can head to the hills, and, you know, and then I can be out there to meet Jesus, and I'll be ready for Jesus to come." You know, the Protestant Reformation said, "If you pray right now, if you believe Jesus died for you, if you, if you believe that and you confess with your mouth, His righteousness is imputed to you today, you are saved today." The emphasis is always on today, because you never know what tomorrow may bring for any of us. No matter our age, no matter what's going on, you look around in the world, all the tragedies that occur. I mean, why not? Jesus is, isn't he attractive enough that we should be able to walk with him on a daily basis? And yet, there is, I don't believe the devil fell, fell asleep, so what does he do? Instead of looking at the grand scope of history and looking at where the church went wrong, so that we don't make those same mistakes. It's not to point the finger, but it, it's, it's to learn, right? So we look at history, and we see how God is with the church. We see how God was calling the church. We see how God was saying, "If you don't repent, I will throw you onto this bed of sickness," right? Remember the church of Thyatira in Revelation 3. And yet the church, instead of repenting, the And yet, the church, instead of repenting, the reformers came, said, "We want to reform the church, we love the church." And what did they do? Every reformer was threatened with death, and only God kept some of them alive. Some of them were martyred. The Waldensies were martyred. So again, Satan's clever. He says, "Wait a minute. Instead of looking at all that, let's look at this little three-year period way back here, or let's look at this seven-year period in the future." And you don't really even have to repent, because really, at the rapture, those are people that want to walk with Jesus. But during the tribulation, some people will say, "You know what? I need to be with Jesus." And then they can wait till the end of the seven-year tribulation, then they can be taken up to heaven. And that's why it left behind. You know, they'd get that one text where Jesus says, "One person will be taken, and the other will be left, and one will be, come down from the roof," and, you know... But it's not talking about, you know, a rapture then. But they write these whole movies and books about, you know, airplanes, and the pilots will be snatched away, and then, you know, and then there'll be these terrible times, and then we have time to repent. That's a little bit cruel, because God is giving us time to repent every day. The Romans 2 says, "God's kindness leads us to repentance on a daily basis." And so when the rapture comes, the second coming and the tribulation, it'd be like waiting to go in the ark until it starts to rain. The door was already closed. Why? Because they had a hundred-and-twenty years. It wasn't that Noah wasn't kind, he'd preached the message. And Jesus says, "As it was in the days of Noah, so shall it be when the Son of Man comes in." People will have heard the message for years and years and years. They had plenty of time. They could have learned of Jesus. They could have tasted and seen that Jesus is good. They've hardened their hearts. But yet, this theory could leave some hope. Well, you know, Greg's a pretty pious guy, but I'll wait till, you know, after the tribulation. I'll repent right there at the end, where I can go up. He can go up a little bit earlier than me. I'll stay here. So, if you're, if you have any questions about the other stuff, I'll try to answer them as best I can, or maybe, I think Bob has studied some of this as well, so he could help me answer some of it. But I would encourage you to continue doing what we're doing. Know the real thing. Understand why, how the prophecies relate to each other. Why Daniel 9 and Daniel 8, that one was amputated off of the other one. They go together. So to take that last week that Jesus was crucified in and say, "No, no, no, that's after, that's at the tribulation." Wait a minute, where'd that come from? If you look at the Bible, they're together, and it's a whole. It's a complete whole. So taking Bible texts and pulling them out and moving them over here, and really, as the one author said today, "He went looking for the biblical basis, and he can't really find it." That's why, when they go back and look, where did this come from? They go back to this girl lying on her deathbed, almost, saying she had a vision that she was taken up right before the tribulation. And John Darby went to talk to her, and after that, he started talking about this tribulation, and how God's going to take up the church, and then there's a tribulation, then there's the final rapture at the end of the seven years. So let's know the real thing. If we have a roaming mic, if you have some questions, we actually have some time tonight to actually talk about something I know very little about. Anybody have any comments?
I think you know a lot about...
Yeah. Did you find this helpful, number one? For those of you who have talked to other people from other denominations, to find out where it came from. If any of you want to share personal experiences of talking to somebody who believes in this, it might be instructive for us of how to talk with people. Because, you know, we need to be very kind and not make fun of other people's belief systems, but also help people... Remember the beginning of Revelation? Jesus said, "If you know and understand these things, you will be blessed." I find it a huge blessing to think that God didn't fall asleep for two thousand years, from the cross to the tribulation. It's a blessing. I know that every waking moment since Jesus left here, the Holy Spirit's been here, God has been working with humanity. So any thoughts, questions, suggestions? Yeah, Greg, we do need you with the mics for everybody to hear you.
Yeah. One of the graphs or pictures you showed, it looked like whoever was doing that interpretation was trying to read Daniel in Revelation literally, and not apply any symbolism to the various things that you read. In terms of, you know, it's, a year is a day, a day is a year. No, a day is a day.
A day is a day. Israel is Israel.
Right.
The temple is the temple.
Right.
Yeah. No, it's a...
So maybe that's where some of this comes from.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Without looking at the year-day principle, it doesn't get you into the long periods of time, and it also gets you concentrated on the Middle East, which, by the way, if you don't think that this understanding in evangelical Christianity affects America's foreign policy, you need to wake up. It actually does. And, for instance, the embassy was just moved to Jerusalem from Tel Aviv. Many evangelicals were super excited about that. These prophecies. They really believe this is helping bring about this time when the Jews will all convert, when the Antichrist will come, when Jerusalem again is the center of the Jewish world. And by the way, for my Jewish relatives, they can't stand all the evangelical Christians that support Israel. They, it just drives them up a wall when they hear, "Every Jew's going to convert," and they're, "They're standing by Israel." You know, there's, on these Christian broadcasting channels? Yeah, it irritates them. Yeah, but thank you for the comment. Any other comments? I mean, the one night, I actually quit on time, and you guys are all silent, you know? What happened? All right, Trevor.
Well, one thing that I thought was interesting is that the, this Advent Awakening, of which we believe we are a part, and I have to say, you asked if anybody had a personal experience, you know, or whatever. And I have to say that my journey had to do with history, and you're very interested in history, and I appreciate that. Because I was kind of a late bloomer. I always accepted my dad's faith. He was a wonderful evangelist, and I believed everything, you know, he said. But I got through academy, and I thought I was doing fine. I thought I had the world by the tail, you know, until I got to Pacific Union College and I realized there were a lot of questions that I never dreamed about, you know? And in my little second-floor room at Granger Hall at PUC, I, my mom had a little fluorescent lamp she bought me, and I sat there, and I started having these, not misgivings, but questions, you know? And one of them had to do with Ellen White, I had to resolve that. And the other had to do with some of the things you've been talking about for, you said it's a year. I can't believe it, but it's been a while. And I had, and my questions were, you know, we identify ourselves as being, having a role in the fulfillment of these prophecies. Daniel, Revelation 12, and Revelation 14, and I had my questions. I said, "Wow, you know, is this really..." I, you know, I believed it, you know, but is this really true, you know? And if so, I said to myself, "I should find in history, you know, I mean, our history as a movement, that there are things about us and our past and our history that fit this, if this really applies," you know? So I got into this, you know, and became interested in, and it's been kind of a long journey of mine, exploring these, some of these things that you've been delving into, and far deeper than most of us, myself included. But one of the things that I thought was fascinating is that you talked about the futurist and the preterist views having come from this counter-Reformation, these counter-Reformation views, and that both were Jesuits, you know? Well, one of the things that I found in delving into the history myself is that there was a worldwide movement following 1798. As you said, the French Revolution was just a shocking thing, that the church would be overthrown by rationalists, you know, and one of the great nations in Europe would overthrow, you know, that was an earth-shaking thing for people socially and religious and historically. But anyway, long story short, that really got the modern Advent Awakening of interest in prophecy going, and Luther, and Miller was a fulfillment of that in our country and in our tradition, you know? But I found this was very interesting. Before this Luther, Ellen White calls him an American reformer, you know, I mean, Miller. And before Miller, this awakening of interest in America, which started with Miller, there was a similar movement all over the world, you know, South America, and in the Jewish, Judaism, and in England especially, you know? And I found that it was fascinating, Edward Irving and hundreds of other Presbyterians and Anglicans and so on, for a short period of time, were teaching essentially what we have understood, the way we've understood it. But anyway, cut to the chase. The thing that I found fascinating is that Edward Irving, the most popular preacher in London, and hundreds like him, Presbyterians, Anglicans, Church of England, you know, were preaching that in their pulpits, all over Britain especially, and similar things were happening, but especially in England. But it was very interesting to me to find that Irving taught himself Spanish, you know, in order to be able to read the reaffirmation of what you're calling the historical method from a Jesuit in Chile, I believe it was, by the name of Lacunza. Lacunza, who was a Jesuit, just like Rivera and Alcazar, Lacunza wrote this book, Coming of Messiah and Glory, or something like that. And it was a reaffirmation of what we understand and what the English Advent Awakening was teaching. And he was a Jesuit, you know? So you actually have three significant Jesuits in apocalyptic study and interpretation and the history of apocalyptic studies.
That is very interesting.
Which is, I thought was fascinating. Lacunza and Rivera and Alcazar and Lacunza reaffirmed what was denied at the time of the Reformation by the church.
And by the way, was it the guy Wolf? Wolf that went around?
The Jewish, yeah.
Yeah, Jewish guy that went... And you know, even my relatives in what is now Ukraine, in the Russian Empire at the time, they followed a German, I believe Mennonite preacher that taught that Jesus was coming back in 1840 at that time. And they actually moved to the Caucasus, where I was. They believed he would come back to Mount Arat. So, yeah, you're right. But again, I think probably the historical method is the best way to explain that, right, Trevor? I mean, you look at this age, and you see all these movements popping up. But why? Biblically, this is the end of time. God is wanting the gospel preached, wanting to finish the work and go home, so... Yeah, Anne?
My finishing the work and going home this evening, the thing that you said was, "It's not to point the finger, but it's so that we learn from the mistakes of others." And I think you can really apply it not only to prophecy, but also through all the Bible. I mean, because there are some horrific things that, you know, just, you hardly think of how awful it is, but it's that we don't understand how awful sin is.
Yeah.
And how sweet it is to have the grace of God.
Yeah, thank you, Anne. Yeah, you know, pointing the finger and learning... By the way, I just found out today, the General Conference Session up in, I believe, Indianapolis this summer, it is now open for the public to go see it. If you'd like to, if you've never been to one, it was, it's fascinating. I got to be a delegate at one. It's a bit cumbersome to be a delegate, but it's great to be there on Sabbath.
It's in St. Louis.
That's right. They moved it to St. Louis now. That's right. And seventy thousand people there, from all over the world. And you have all these delegations. I mean, there, I actually was talking, I gave a speech yesterday to the Adventist Enrollment Association that was meeting here at Advent Health University. And I was just thinking about our time in history and what God is trying to do, and the fact that He's calling people, because if you are looking at prophecy, and you're looking at this interpretation of it, you're going to be focusing on Jerusalem, you're going to be focused on the politics of China and Russia, because this is what I've read, they're going to come, and there's going to be some terrible ruler who's going to stand up and be the Antichrist, and there are all kinds of theories about him. And instead of concentrating on, "Wait a minute, the gospel's being preached in the whole world right now." And twenty-one million people have come into our church, and we don't believe that we have the, you know, the trademark, you know, on the gospel. Other Christian groups are working, and people all over the world are coming to faith in Christ. And again, if we have a prophetic understanding that turns our attention from what needs to be, where it needs to be, when you think of Revelation 14, "The gospel shall be preached in all the world, to every nation, tribe, tongue, kindred." We know we can be working. I know Les has an interest in the Bible Translation Society, right? And this is part of that work. It's here in Orlando. It's not an Adventist, but again, what is it? It's a fulfillment of Bible prophecy. The Bible wasn't even being preached in the Middle Ages, and all of a sudden, now there are Bibles that are being translated into all these different languages. So hopefully, this is helpful. Hopefully, this keeps us on the right, looking at Christ, looking at the preaching of the gospel, looking at the blessing that it is to be a Christian and see His family from all around the world. You know, the Adventist Church, it's, that's the thing, I'm almost the most proud of the Adventist Church. We work in two hundred countries of the world. You know, what we've been able to do with this Ukraine project and the Florida Conference, no other church here in Orlando could do what we've done, I don't think. They don't have the system set up to be able to do, when you give money on a weekend, and that money's working at a place all around the world, in a war zone, two days from there, two days from when you give it, and there's no overhead, boom, it's there. We have a lot to be thankful for, so... Anyway, hopefully, you enjoyed that. Next week, I will be in Ukraine, so you can just be praying for me. We'll be in Chernobyl Sea, going around to the different orphanages. We're collecting medication right now, and that's going very well. We're excited about it. But Pastor Bob will fill in and go through Revelation 17. And we will see, as we saw tonight, how Protestantism started out good, and then it just started to tail off like we saw tonight. Protestants, Protestantism ended up adopting the theories of the counter-Reformation, which is just so weird. They were countering the Reformation, and sure enough, it seeped in and actually did counter the Reformation. So you can go through that next week with Pastor Bob. Let's have a word of prayer as we leave. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much. We just praise Your name for the gospel and for imputed righteousness of Christ. Lord, as we look at all these theories, they can be somewhat confusing, so help us just to concentrate on what You want us to concentrate on. May Your Holy Spirit be with us, may it bless us and guide us until we meet again. In Jesus' holy and precious name we pray, in all of God's people's sin. Amen.